Our chairman?
I'll second that motion. And the May fifteen, two thousand twenty-five, Faraqat Municipal Planning Commission is, has begun. Good evening to those of you in attendance and online for attending tonight's Faraqat Municipal Planning Commission meeting. My name is Ron Pincchuck. I am the new chairman that will be conducting tonight's Planning Commission meeting. We appreciate that each of you has taken the time from your schedules to either attend or view tonight's meeting to observe how our town's government works. All Faraqat Municipal Planning Commission meetings are public notice per Tennessee State Law TCA eight dash forty-four dash one oh three. All Planning Commission meetings are streaming on the Faraqat YouTube channel, and links to the recordings may be found on the Town of Faraqat website. Those in attendance should be able to pick up a copy of the agenda at the door. If you are not able to attend in person and reviewing from home, you will be able to see the agenda posted on the Town of Faraqat website. For any persons in attendance who would like to address this commission concerning an item on tonight's agenda, please pick up a blue card at the door, write your name, address, and agenda number that you wish to comment on, and give it to Mark Shipley at the end of the table down here. There will also be time reserved at the end of the business meeting for residents' comments on non-agenda subjects, which also requires that you will fill out a blue comment card as well, and then include your name, address, and topic of your comments. On each agenda item, the chairman will ask the Town of Faraqat residents' input. During this time, any Faraqat resident wishing to speak to the Planning Commission on that specific agenda item may do so for us up to five minutes. After being recognized by the chairman, please proceed to the podium microphone in order to be heard and viewed by all. To conduct efficient business-like meetings, the town has adopted rules for how its meetings will be conducted. Primarily, these rules are designed to keep the meeting progressing along, assure that all points of view are heard and considered, and to provide common courtesy to everyone. We ask that you observe the established meeting rules when addressing members of the town staff and members of the Planning Commission. At the beginning of your presentation, please state your name, address for the record. We ask that you address, address your questions to the chairman. If necessary, the chairman will call on a commissioner or staff member to address your questions or comments. Once you have given your input, please return to your seat. We ask that persons speaking to, speaking avoid the use of improper language and profanity. Please only address the agenda issues. Speakers should strive to present original viewpoints and avoid redundancy. We ask that you also stay on topic of that specific agenda item. Everyone, please remember, we are here tonight doing the people's business. It is a very important responsibility to all of us. I now ask that if you are able, please stand for a moment of silence for prayer and reflection, and then we will follow by recital of the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on the agenda is approval, yeah, approval of the agenda. I have established that there are eight members present, and therefore, we have a quorum for tonight's proceedings. Is there a motion to approve amended, or is there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, there aren't.
Okay. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed? No. Motion passes by unanimously. Approval of the minutes. Are there any amendments to the minutes from the previous meeting?
No, sir.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Everybody in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed? No. Again, motion passes unanimously. Tonight, we have five business items to review, discuss, and consider in our public meeting. Item number four, review the first utility district Everett Road Water Tank and Booster Station Improvements Project, FUD applicant.
This agenda item is really just for information purposes only, and I do have a representative from First Utility District here that can answer any specific questions you all may have. I do have one citizen that signed up to speak as well at that point. But just to give you an overview, this is kind of in the packet, but basically, there's a proposal to install a new four million gallon drinking water tank next to the existing water tank, which is called Everett Road Water Tank. It's situated kind of at the back curve of Burchard Boulevard in the Fox Run subdivision. The, the project also includes a new and expanded booster pump station. Both the new tank and the booster pump station are not within the town limits, but they will be accessed mostly along Burchard Boulevard, so they will have an impact to the Fox Run and, and also the Saddle Ridge subdivisions. Basically, this project is something that FUD is teaming up with LCUB on. They received a grant from TDEC for this project to basically provide for reliable water supplies to serve the growing areas of West Knox County and, and Eastern Loudoun County. The project is expected to begin in June or July of this year, and they have to be complete by September of two thousand twenty-six per the grant. So, as I mentioned earlier, there are going to be some impacts to the Fox Run subdivision because Burchard Boulevard will be the, the primary way to access the project site. First Utility District has already had a meeting with the Fox Run Homeowners Association. They've also notified the residents that are immediately adjacent to the project site, both in Fox Run and Saddle Ridge subdivisions, and they're going to be communicating with both of those subdivisions and especially the affected homeowners throughout the process. And so that's, that's kind of an overview of what was in the packet. Seth Fisher is here from First Utility District. If you all have any specific questions that he could try to answer for you, but we are appreciative of Seth coming and presenting this to you all for, for information purposes, so.
Mark, do we have any citizens signed up?
I do have one citizen that signed up, Mike Rothman.
I'd like to hear from the citizen first. Do you mind, Seth? Hi. State your name, address.
Mike Rothman, six fifty-nine Burchard Boulevard.
Okay. You got five minutes?
Okay, well, I only have a concern for our neighborhood that we need a tank, and that was, that was part of when Seth came over to our homeowner. Question is, our understanding was twenty to thirty trucks a day. Do you want to talk about that? Our concern is...
Oh, can you please turn on your mic? Sorry. There you go. And then pull it, pull it down closer to you. Yeah. Pull it. Thank you. That's good. Yep.
I'm not going to get ejected from here.
He might not be able to hear you at home.
Oh, okay. All right. Twenty to thirty trucks going, cement trucks going up Burchard Boulevard. I don't know, I know a couple of you are very familiar with it. Concern is, one, is how long is this going to be going on roughly? Do you have an answer? Okay. Question of that. Concern is residents being able to get in and out of their driveway if you've got a parade of twenty or thirty trucks going up in the morning and then coming back in the evening. That's, so traffic control is, is an issue off that. Second, is the damage, possible damage to the road? At the meeting, I asked Mr. Fisher if FUD had made any concessions, put money aside for it. He said, no, that is the responsibility of the Town of Faraqat, that you're responsible for the roads. I would, I would ask that you, I would suggest that you have the contractor in, in FUD, when they pay the contractor, I imagine on a monthly, whatever it is, but they set aside some money in case, in case there's road repair that needs to be made, unless the town is already putting money aside. That's, you're going to be talking about a lot of traffic, and this is going on for, I think, sixteen months up and down. So that's it. The other question would be, these trucks, they're going to have debris coming out in our neighborhood. Are you going to be daily cleaning up, weekly cleaning up? What, what program has been taken so that the neighborhood is not, is not put out off of that situation? Hopefully, there won't be, but I like to manage with what-if type situations. And as I mentioned before, I would encourage FUD to set aside monies in case there's incidents, the roads are not up to, before final payment is made. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time and courtesy.
All right, you're up.
All right. Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm Seth Fisher with First Utility District. I have met with Fox Run HOA and heard some of these concerns before. I want to clarify that I did not say if we damaged a road, that it's the town's responsibility to fix it. You know, through all the projects that we work on, we serve the same people. If we damage a road installing a utility line on a break, we're going to repair it to your standards. I didn't say that you all have responsibility. I said that you have the final say on whether or not we've damaged it, what we need to do to repair it. We're not installing a utility line on these roads. We're, we've hired somebody who is going to be driving street legal vehicles on the roads. There will be, on the busiest days when the tank is being constructed, there will be twenty, thirty concrete trucks a day. They don't arrive all at once. They arrive every thirty minutes so that you can empty one before the next one comes. They're load, they have extra axles and extra tires so that their loading is not that different from a, a school bus. Again, they're street legal, they're rated for the roads. I think with the three hundred and sixty homes in there, I don't know how many trips you all use per day per residential home, but we're, we're talking about adding thirty, forty trips in and thirty, forty trips out between the concrete trucks and the employees to a road that probably has a thousand, fifteen hundred a day. So it's a very small increase in traffic. There's, there's nothing out of the ordinary of what's going to be driving down the road that's going to be accessing our site, so.
How long will the project last?
The project will run from this June through September of, of two thousand twenty-six, and a lot of that time will be two guys driving up there to get on their excavators and move dirt around. The intense period where we'll have twenty concrete trucks a day coming to build the tank is going to be much shorter, three, four months. Yeah.
I think that's what the, the residents are probably concerned about, is that, how long is that intense period? Because obviously, we know construction can take a long time.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a couple of months out of the whole, out of the fifteen, sixteen months of the whole contract.
Okay.
And I, and I told them that at the HOA meeting.
The concern about debris, I guess, the only trucks would be the cement trucks going back and forth, concrete trucks?
I mean, it'll be employees getting up there. They'll bring an excavator on a trailer. They'll bring the block up for the pump station building. We have a, a stone construction entrance, and we've also added a, a washout to wash tires off before the trucks leave the site.
Okay. My suggestion would be, prior to the start of this, is to take, you're going to take a drive up the hill and down the hill and look at the tree canopy. It's a heavily treed subdivision, and so if they watch what they're doing, they won't knock any limbs off, but if they don't, they may. So I would highly suggest that. That's all I've done.
I did forget to say, to your point, we've added to the contract to have our pre-construction video, not just on our site, but all the way down to the entrance. So we'll have, right before we start, up-to-date video of that entire access. I don't expect, I don't expect concrete trucks to damage these roads. If they do, we'll, we'll get with you like we do on any, every other project. We have, we don't have money set aside for any repairs, but we have a forty million dollar a year budget, and this is, we're talking about asphalt repairs. Anytime our water main breaks, we're going to repair the asphalt, and we have the ability to do that financially.
That entrance that goes from the street over to your tank, that's your property or your easement and your road?
It's the HOA's property, and it's our access easement, and it's your greenway easement also, but the HOA, the HOA owns it, and we have overlapping easements on that.
So any damage to that road you need to repair?
That, we've got an allowance in the contract to repave that, that little driveway slash greenway.
That tank existed, I'm sorry. That tank existed before the, the town was, or that neighborhood was put in place? So that was part of the plating of the neighborhood, was that easement for you guys to?
Yes.
I would think that if there's any concerns from our engineering staff about road impact, we would have heard about that. So I, I'm not too concerned about that as well. Darrell is on top of that. We don't, he's the one that has to figure out how we're going to repave all these roads, so.
That site where the tank is going to go is pretty heavily wooded, so where's all that?
It was.
It was? It's not anymore?
It was, it was logged before it was sold to us in two thousand twenty, and we've periodically kept the brush down since then, so there's, there's not much. There are a few trees down the hill towards Saddle Ridge that will still need to come down, but the vast majority of it is, is complete and has been for about five years.
This is for Mark. You said it's not on our property at all?
No, the new tank and the, the other, I forget what it was called, booster pump, both of those are just outside of the town limits. Yep. In Knox County, unincorporated.
So we're not counting trees and measuring trees?
No.
Okay.
No.
Any other comments from the commissioner or questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next item. Item number five. The purpose of this agenda item is to review and approve, no, I'm sorry, approval of the FY two thousand twenty-six, FY two thousand thirty-one Capital Investment Plan, CIP.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Planning Commission, David Smoke, Town Administrator, and I'm happy to present our capital investment program for FY twenty-six to two thousand thirty-one, thinking about that far out now, six years out, what we planned for. But I did want to come and talk to you a little bit tonight about everything that we're working on, and we've been talking to the Board of Mayor and Alderman about it over the last several months during the budget process. So first off, just wanted to talk about what is a capital investment program? This is something that we look at big projects in those terms, or anything over twenty-five thousand dollars. Something's going to take us a little bit of time to, to plan for, design, construct, and implement. It's part of the municipal budgeting law of nineteen eighty-two, and so that law tells us when we approve an operating budget, and we do a capital, any kind of capital improvements, then we also need to have a capital budget that's approved as well, and as part of that process is to come before the Planning Commission and present it to you. So again, we plan for really large projects over a six-year timeframe. This helps us to prioritize and fund the various projects that we have, and make sure that we keep our budget balanced as well as we go forward. Our capital process starts really in November with an internal department head meeting where we get together, talk about potential projects, what are the things that we see upcoming in the future, and then we present those to the Board of Mayor and Alderman at several different workshops. One is our strategic planning workshop, also our capital investment program workshops through our budget process. And so all of those workshops and discussions have culminated in the CIP that I'm going to present to you tonight and share with you tonight. One of the differences for the capital investment program is that this actually does get presented to the Planning Commission for your recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and you're recommending the projects and, and where they are in the, in the schedule, but not necessarily the funding. That's ultimately up to the Board of Mayor and Alderman and their discretion with that. So, so getting through it, the capital investment program has really three main areas that we break it down into. One is general government projects, one are park recreation projects, and then other is transportation and infrastructure projects. So I'm going to talk about, and the other thing we do is we budget for FY two thousand twenty-six. So that's the fiscal year that starts July one, going through June thirtieth. All the other fiscal years are what we're planning for. So those things can change over time. Anything in twenty-seven and beyond could change. In fact, anything in twenty-six could change, depending on what circumstances may be. Just means the money's there for those projects to go ahead and get started on that's available. So with that, I'm going to kind of rifle through these projects. If you want to have any questions and just stop me in the middle, please do. If not, I can go through them all, and we can always come back and talk about them and where they're located in the budget at this time. So first, we're going to talk about general government projects. So the first thing we have done over several years is budget money for land acquisition. We put money away periodically over time. This helps us pay cash for projects like parkland that we want to purchase, right-of-way acquisition that we may have for any roadway improvements, things like that. So next year, we're planning on, again, putting away three hundred thousand dollars for land acquisition. There's also public works facility improvements. Obviously, with Town Hall, we've been able to renovate our Town Hall and get this up to speed. Next up really is our public works facility. We've grown into that and grown out of that over the last, really, thirty-five to forty years, and so this would be an assessment of what our needs are for the next forty years, and also looking at a phasing plan for what that would be and potential costs going forward as well. Next up is a restroom facility at the Anchor Green over at Biddle Farm. This is something we actually budgeted in the prior fiscal year. The project took a little longer to get started, so now that we're, we're heavily built out in the, in the Biddle Farm area, we want to go ahead and budget for a restroom there at the Village Green, or at the Anchor Green area, where we will have different events, things like that, for that, for that community and for that area. Another internal thing, really nobody else will see, but we at our staff's level sure will, is an enterprise resource planning software program. So this really is an internal function. This is all the things that integrate our finance, HR, public works, vehicle maintenance, contracts, you name it. Those are all the things that we need to get up to speed on, and in today's, today's world of software and design, and so this will help us be more efficient and effective internally as we go forward in the future. We also have a town facility security plan, and so this is enhancing our security at all of our different parks that we have. We started this a few years ago, and this is going to be expanding upon that and hoping to get all of our parks completed this next fiscal year. Next up is our parks and recreation projects, and so with that, we have got a sand volleyball complex reconstruction. This is part of a grant project through the state of Tennessee. It's fifty thousand dollars next year, and if you know where that's at, at Maribob Leonard Park, it's been a great volleyball court, still is. We just want to get it, it needs to be redone and get back to its top, top rating that we have in that area, and we get a lot of play out there, so we want to make sure it's safe for the folks that want to use it. Also a project that actually, we're going to be able to take out of the CIP, but we just got a pickleball complex that we're about to build at Maribob Leonard Park, and part of that contract is going to be resurfacing the Mcfee Park tennis courts. So after the first reading of the budget with the board, we'll be able to take that out because it's already funded in this year's budget. Next up is a lot of maintenance, a lot of maintenance items, and these are all in future years of the CIP, so I'm going to kind of go through these. One is Anchor Park and the fencing at Anchor Park. It's just been there a really long time, needs to be kind of updated. It's just been hanging on for a while, so we need to update the Anchor Park fencing. Next up is the Anchor Park Playground and make that ADA access, ADA accessible for the playground structure, probably means moving the playground structure that you see now at Anchor Park. Next up is the Maribob Leonard Park Trail Lighting. Again, it's just a maintenance item. The fixtures and everything out there are getting older, and it's needed to, to be maintained and, and get some new posts, things like that, in place for that. And there's also Maribob Leonard Park Field Three turf replacement. So I think everybody's familiar with the two turf fields that we had that we replaced this past year with the grant. This is looking out into the future at the useful life of this, the last field we have, Field Three, and, and getting that up to speed with the new turf that we have, that we've just put down recently, and that's in FY twenty-eight, so we're talking three fiscal years out for that. I think our final project for Parks and Recreation, well, I'll say that, we've got two more. One more here, Mcfee Road property. The, I know the Planning Commission's well aware, we purchased property on Mcfee Road a couple of years ago now. This is to look at, and we received a grant, two point seven five million from the state of Tennessee. This is now reallocating that money toward this project to look at how to get into the project, how to, how to enter the site, do some site work and design. We're currently doing a public survey of the community on what they want to see out of these areas, and so that feedback will be helpful. And so that feedback will be helpful when we start looking at future phasing and conceptual designing for, for the parks. So looking at a three-year window there to, to start some kind of phasing plan for that Mcfee Road property. And then the final thing again for, for the Parks and Recreational items that we have is the maintenance and really upgrades for the pads and the elements at Mcfee Park. Splash pad, which is a super popular thing in the summertime for all the kids that are out there. They love, they love this thing. And in fact, we did some videos recently on, on the splash pad and tons of people interested in it. So it's a really, really popular thing here in the town. Okay, our final area of, of interest is our transportation and infrastructure project. So one of the main things we do that not a lot of people see, but sometimes they do, is stormwater improvements. And we've been doing a lot of stormwater improvements throughout the years. We've just finished up a contract recently, in fact, upgrading several of our pipes throughout town. This is again putting money away each and every year for stormwater improvements. And as we build those funds up, then we can go and do some major improvements that we need to do throughout the town. That's again $400,000 a year over the next several years that we have for stormwater improvements. We also have, I know everybody's hopefully familiar with the ATMS project, which was to upgrade our signals, our traffic signals all throughout town, get them integrated and talking to each other. That's been a huge success here in the last few months. So hopefully everybody's drive time's a little easier than it used to be. But this is actually to look at adaptive traffic signals. So that's actually increasing even more the efficiency of our signals with adaptive technology. And so we want to continue to make sure we're on the cutting edge of our traffic infrastructure that we have here in the town. So we're looking at $250,000 a year over the next four years to get all of our system integrated with adaptive signal upgrades. I don't know about you, but as I mature, I get, it's harder and harder for me to see at night. And so we're looking at illuminated street signs for some of our major intersections around town. Those are, those are visitors that come to town that don't really know where they're going. I think these really, really help people understand and know and can see at night what those street signs are. So we'd be looking at putting those on our major arterials and major intersections to start and then kind of progressing on from there. Next up, we have Boyd Station Road multimodal improvements. In fact, I think the Planning Commission's about to talk about that here with Darrell in just a few minutes. But this is a cost share with the developer that's doing the Grove at Boyd Station. And that's going to be improving this stretch of roadway all the way from Mcfee Road to where the terminus would be of eventual Virtue Road improvements. And I'll talk about that project here in just a few minutes. But this is going to put money in the budget for next fiscal year to be able to do those improvements after July 1. Next up, we have Campbell Station Road and Jamestown Boulevard intersection improvements. When we lived over at the community center for the last 16 months, we definitely saw a lot of traffic coming in and out of Jamestown Boulevard, going toward the high school and going in different directions. So this would actually be to signalize that intersection at Jamestown and North Campbell Station and make pedestrian improvements as well, make it easier for pedestrians to cross. So again, we're looking at a signal in next year's budget, both design and engineering on that and construction are roughly $700,000. And in the future, a couple of years out from that in FY 28, we have talked about a possible light at the intersection then of Campbell Station Road and Eddie Courtney Way, which is the entrance to the high school. Again, the reason we're putting this out a couple of years out from that is whether we need it or not. We may be able to, to do the Jamestown and feel that the traffic flow is enough to where we don't need that, but we wanted to put money out there in the future, just in case that is something we want to move forward on in FY 2028. Also another signal improvement and intersection improvement is Concord Road and Loop Road intersection. That's currently under design and we look to do the improvements, which is again a signal next year in the budget for $650,000 at Concord and Loop Road. Another one is Everett Road Greenway Connection. This is a project we've had on our plans for several years now. It's a short section of trail that would just connect where it terminates right now on Everett Road and connects up to the Fox Run subdivision where their trail ends, right there near the interstate. And this would connect from Fox Run down into Split Rail Farm. We also have the Red Mill Dam Trailhead. This is one that we've been working with First Utility District on to have a parking area and then having a trailhead to be able to get down to the old Red Mill Dam. Really cool site down there that was gifted to the town a couple of years ago. And so we want to make sure that the public can get down there and see that here soon. And so that's projected next year. It all depends on First Utility District. They got a big sewer project going on right now, so we want to make sure they have plenty of time to, to get their project done and out of the way before we would then come in behind and do this work. Next up, we have the Sonya Drive Admiral Road multimodal improvements. Again, this project was scheduled to be done in FY 25. We weren't able to get to it, and so we've rebudgeted that for FY 2026. Next, we have a couple of projects dealing with the Fairgate Elementary School. The school system just cut the ribbon on the new school this, yesterday in fact. Great ribbon cutting, exciting for the town, having a new elementary school. But there is going to be some traffic that we need to mitigate for and deal with. And so one of those projects that we look at is at the corner of Boring, excuse, yeah, at Boring Road and Smith Road, is to do a four-way stop there and then make some intersection modifications for pedestrian access and for the, the small, I guess cul-de-sac that's right there across from Boring Road. So again, roughly $100,000 over the next two years to do a little bit of design and then construction right before the school gets open in FY 2028, I think is the, or '27, '27, sorry. Next up, we have Boring Road Mid Block Pedestrian Crossing. And this would be a potential crossing near the entrance that the school is going to create there off Boring Road. And so that's scheduled to be a bus entrance and a staff entrance to the north. But we would have a mid-block crossing, ones you're familiar with, with the push-button yellows, the yellow flashing signs that come up, get your attention. We don't know where that, exactly that would be, but we would anticipate somewhere along that Boring Road corridor. And then the final thing we talked about with the board and had several workshops to discuss this is what, what to do with the rest of Boring Road. And so right now, what we have planned is to close Boring Road from the southern, the southernmost driveway that is on Boring Road now that would have a house that's connected to it and then close it there, have a cul-de-sac, and then also close it at Kingston Pike. Any other project that we would do because of the road traffic that we would, we anticipate coming with the school would require some improvements to Boring Road, which again, the budget would be much, much, much higher to do those improvements in that area. So this is the preliminary design and, and concept is to close Boring Road at the cul-de-sac and at Kingston Pike. Next up is, is I think the final project we have dealing with the school. There's also some traffic mitigation that needs to occur along Kingston Pike. So in the afternoons and the mornings, Kingston Pike traffic there at Smith Road will back up substantially all the way past the Sugarwood Drive entrance. And so the concept here is to try to get a side street off of Sugarwood Drive over to the signal that not, right now is at CVS. And so that would allow for those people coming into and out of Sugarwood, basically to have a much safer entrance. If you think about where Costco's at, the entrance there on Kingston Pike, very similar thing was done several years ago when Costco came in. We realigned a road, the county did with us, to get that to a signalized intersection. So similar concept here for Sugarwood Drive access along Kingston Pike. Next up, we have Turkey Creek Road multimodal improvements. Again, this project was budgeted for and in this fiscal year, it was not started. And so we would just rebudget for that in FY 2026. I think the final project, no, excuse me, final road project that we have right now is the Union Road multimodal improvements. This is a project that we've been working on for seven to eight years now. This project is an 80/20 split with the state of Tennessee. Finally getting to the construction phase here soon, and so we're excited about that. But we do need to budget for the monies to go ahead and get that project started and under construction for next year. And so that's in the FY 2026 budget. We also have a roundabout that's planned for the southern entrance to Maribob Leonard Park. That's under design currently. And this would then have the construction be able to start sometime in FY 2026 when design is, is finally complete. We also have Virtue Road Phase Two multimodal improvements. This is, this project's been under design. This would then have construction a couple of years out in FY 2027. Again, this is grant-funded and, and depends on a grant being approved by our TPO, our Transportation Planning Organization. And so this would extend the improvements that are currently or, or Phase One started on Virtue Road down just to where you see on your screen, the northern, where it's in the red, right there along Turkey Creek and then coming all the way down to the Boyd Station improvements that I talked about earlier. So this would then get that entire roadway improved to the town standards that we have today. Next is a pedestrian improvement along Kingston Pike. This is planned for FY 27. This is to get a safer way for people to cross Kingston Pike than having to go at a mid-block crossing or even cross at a signal. This would be under Kingston Pike in an existing culvert. Again, we've had this project off and on in our CIP for years, but this is looking at FY 27 for design and construction in FY 2028. Another project that we looked at into the future would be Municipal Center Drive Extension for up to Kingston Pike. This again would be completely grant-dependent. If we were able to get a grant through TPO, then we may want to move forward on this. That's why it's all the way out in FY 2029, several years away. But we did want to just plan for this. This is again, would help alleviate the traffic at the intersection of Campbell Station and Kingston Pike. Would also open up economic development opportunities for the property if, if the board decided to move forward with that at that time. And our final project that we have, again, we've had this in and out of the budget over the years, is Evans Road multimodal improvements. This again goes from, I think, Mcfee Road all the way to where improvements end. They're right in front of Ivy Lake Drive on your screen. And so this would again would be designed, not until FY 2029, and then right-of-way acquisition in 2030 and then going on beyond that even for construction at this time. So we have a, a large capital investment program over the next six years, roughly $36 million in projects. A lot of that's grant-funded, a lot of it's town-funded, right? That's the way we have operated all the time. We have no debt involved in this budget going forward. So with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions that the board may have or the commission may have tonight about any of these projects.
Mark, do we have anybody signed up?
No, we don't.
Okay, commissioners?
None.
I have a question. On this, on the second sheet of your summary there, about halfway down, there's a, it's called Ending Balance. And I couldn't figure out where that figure came from. Can you explain that?
It's on page two. Which number, which number are you looking at?
Ending balance?
Under total CIP funding sources, total CIP expenditures.
Right, are you looking at 11.597 million, Mr. Green? For FY 26?
That's correct.
That number, okay.
Yeah, where'd that come from?
Sure, so we have a funding total, so we have, we have revenues and expenditures and then we have total funding sources and then we have an ending balance. So it's the, the revenues minus the expenditures and then what the ending balance is going to be in that fund comes up to 11. roughly $6 million heading into next year. From there then, we have different projects that we have, outstanding projects that are already in the works, stormwater projects that we've, we've assigned to. That's called Assigned Balance, which gives us then an available balance of $8.9 million heading into the next fiscal year of 2027.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. If there's no further questions or comments, then we're going to have a vote. Do we need a roll call vote? Mayor, you want a roll call vote?
Roll call.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Povlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinchock?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Devlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
They have to vote unanimously, thank you. All right, next item, item number six. Discussion and public hearing on approval of a preliminary, preliminary plan for improvements to Boyd Station Road in association with the Grove at Boyd Station subdivision, Zoned R1/OSMR, Radley Engineering applicant.
Okay, this item has two components. It's improvements to preliminary platform improvements to Boyd Station Road itself. And then as part of that, the incorporation of a roundabout. As was shown in the packet, the existing pavement width of Boyd Station Road is about 20 feet. And since you have the railroad right-of-way to the south, pretty much all the improvements to Boyd Station Road and the roundabout are occurring on the north. The improvements, as David mentioned earlier, is going to be a participation between the town and the developer. There is a total widening, including the shoulders of roughly four feet. There would be curb and gutter extended on the north side of Boyd Station Road, but it won't be tied into the storm sewer system. It's just so flat through Boyd Station Road that it's really just to channelize the water flow and kind of control it better than trying to incorporate an open drainage system, which is what we were originally looking at, but it's just too flat through there to, to make that work. There is one parcel to the west of the Grove's frontage on Boyd Station Road that would be entirely the town's responsibility in terms of the improvements to the road and also adding the section of Greenway Trail. The rest of the Greenway Trail, let me pull that up. And that's the green line that's shown here. But basically, the Grove at Boyd Station developer is going to be putting in the rest of the Greenway Trail along Boyd Station Road and then bringing the trail up and tying it to Virtue Road to the, to far eastern end of the, of their frontage. So that is part of that, this project, well, that, the Greenway's not part of this project, but that's kind of how it all ties in to the Boyd Station Road improvements. In terms of the roundabout, the town actually had asked for the developer to look at this because as everybody knows, Boyd Station Road is a kind of a long, straight road and it kind of invites people to drive faster than they maybe should. So we were trying to look at ways to slow the traffic and also kind of incorporate a nice entrance element to the Grove at Boyd Station subdivision. Kind of similar to what we've done with Virtue Road and Brookmere subdivision a few years ago. So the, the roundabout is, it's asymmetrical. It's a little bit different design than what you have on Mcfee Road. And it really will kind of force the traffic to enter the roundabout at a slower speed and exit it at a slower speed because you have a little bit sharper turning radius to make that maneuver. So it should be fairly effective at slowing the speed along that particular section of road. This particular project, and there was a detour plan that was included in the packet, to facilitate the completion of this project, there would be requested a shutdown of part of Boyd Station Road so that they can facilitate this project and get it complete as quick as possible. I think they're trying to finish the project over the summer so that the school traffic is not an issue. But that is part of what they would have to request through the Board of Mayor and Alderman as far as the temporary closure of a section of Boyd Station Road. I'll pull that up here on the screen. But basically, let me pull this up here. So this section from Mcfee here on the west end all the way to basically where the last house lot and the entrance to Willow Cove subdivision, which is not in the town, but it does have access from Boyd Station Road. So that section would all be temporarily closed to facilitate the, the completion of the improvements to Boyd Station Road and the roundabout. So the staff has reviewed this plan and recommends approval. There were four subject twos related to this. One of the things that we're asking them to look at is to incorporate a small wall, similar to what was done on Virtue Road, because we think, you know, that aids to the effectiveness, I think, of slowing traffic down. It also provides for the opportunity to add some landscaping and, and make it, you know, look attractive. There were some suggestions on a couple of the detour signs showing the anticipated utility relocations and then an and then an irrevocable letter of credit to be provided because at some point, the, our public street is gonna be torn up, you know, to make the improvement. So the town needs to have a letter of credit in place if something were to happen and that couldn't get completed, we'd have the ability to go in and complete the project. We did the same thing with Virtue Road when that project was under construction. So that's a general overview of the project. Darrell Smith's here. If you have any specific technical questions about the project, he could probably answer those better than I could.
Before we go further, we'll need a motion?
Move to approve with the subject twos. Are there subject twos?
Four.
Yes.
Second. Darrell?
Well, I have to say that Mark gave a much better description of the project than I was planning on giving. So I think he stole all my thunder. I've got nothing else to add to that. I'm here for, for questions. I will also say that Anderson Baker and Thomas Krajewski are here from Saddle Brook Properties. If you have any questions of the developer.
Before we ask the commissioners, are there anybody signed up to talk?
No, sir.
Okay, commissioners, you want to start at this end? Derek? Nothing? Jeff?
No, I mean, I, yeah, well, how long is that closure gonna be? Just my own knowledge and experience.
I would say probably along the lines of three months or so.
I believe that's what Russ said at a staff developer meeting, roughly three.
I mean, it's necessary.
Good guess.
I get it, so it's not ideal, but that's fine, yeah.
You know, Jeff, you brought up a good point there.
It's only so many, like, for example, fire trucks can fit under the bridge, right? So, and this being closed takes that away, but it just makes it a little trickier.
Well, that wasn't my concern. My concern was a turnaround down there where it's dead-ended while the construction's being done, in case you have to deadhead a truck.
It's, it's okay, you can figure it out.
Okay.
This happens, it's part of it.
Oh, you see?
I'm just gonna, I know that there were issues with the recent opening of the, the failure of the detention pond. And I'd asked you if this project is going to improve stormwater flow along that area. Will it?
It probably won't improve the drainage out there.
Because it's so flat?
Right now, we're talking with developers about whether that pipe that, that clogged up the other, the other night, whether that should be replaced into this project or if they should go ahead and do it with, with their project. Now, I'm talking about either.
It's either way, you want it to happen. You would like the.
Either way, I would like to see that pipe replaced.
Okay.
I do have one comment. At the staff developer meeting, we were talking about the heights of the outer perimeter of the roundabout.
Right.
And Russ was talking about McPhee and Virtue. McPhee's rises about an inch, and the one at Virtue is about four or five, like a regular curb. What is, I haven't seen a.
We were looking at the.
Drawing.
We were looking at the ones on McPhee Road just yesterday, and I, I want to say it's about, it's four or five inches high.
McPhee?
But. It's more of a, a mountable curb.
That's what I'm saying. We get to, to slow people down, we're gonna have a higher curb, like a regular street curb.
I can see like a regular street curb going in there.
I'd advise that. I think that's a long stretch and I don't know how the commissioners feel about that, but.
I talked with Russ Rackley about the, the idea of the wall. He mentioned that he's a little uncomfortable putting a wall that's very high. I mean, you want to make sure cars don't drive through it, but at the same time, you don't want to put a large object right there.
I travel McPhee Road an awful lot, and I see a lot of cars going right over the, the outer portion of the roundabout.
Well, we, we.
It's not high enough to slow them down. So that would be my recommendation.
If you're gonna put a wall, are you, are you saying, and then Mark said, in case we have future vegetation, would that mean that it would be?
We would still want it vegetated. We would still want it vegetated.
Okay, so you will have a, a way to sprinkle it?
Sure.
Okay, that's what, that's all I got.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, if not, we need a vote. Want you to take a roll call vote?
Do we need a roll call vote?
Oh, we don't need one? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? No? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Darrell. All right. Next item is item number seven. Discussion in public hearing on approval of a site plan for gym renovation and expansion to the St. John Newman Catholic School located 625 St. John Court, Zoned R1, Community Tectonics Architects Incorporated, applicant.
Yes, this, this item involves approval of a addition. A classroom addition is a little over seventy-one hundred square feet, and a possible addition of a gymnasium that's gonna be funding-dependent of a little over five thousand square feet at the St. John Newman Catholic School off of Grigsby Chapel Road. The, just to give you a little context, here's Grigsby Chapel Road on the very south end of the drawing. And then the, the proposed addition and gymnasium expansion are in this part of the campus. And as part of this project, there are also, there'll be five parking spaces that will be taken out, and they're gonna provide a turnaround, kind of a drop-off area here just to the south of the area that they're expanding. The project also includes some additional outdoor covered areas. There'll be some additional sidewalks and some landscaping enhancements as part of the project. Specifically, this project, the classroom addition is, includes a STEM class, science class, a learning class, and a gathering space for collaborative learning. The proposed expansion is in an area that currently, and this was talked about at the staff developer meeting, but the rectory is here, but it's currently on its own parcel. And the whole, the rectory and the school, church, campus are all, all in the R1 zoning district. And churches and schools are permitted uses in most of our residential zoning districts, but they have to comply with different requirements than a residential use because they can have some impact on, potentially, on surrounding residential properties. So some of those things include setbacks for parking lots and accessways, compliance with lighting, landscaping, and things like that. So one of the things that, when we were reviewing this plat, this plan, let me pull up a different drawing here. But the proposed turnaround area comes right to the existing property line of the rectory. And in the zoning ordinance, this has to be set back at least ten feet from the property line. In fact, there's really a twenty-five-foot buffer along the abutting residential property. So that was one, one thing that came up. And another is there's some pole lights that they're installing for this turnaround area, and they exceed the foot candle allowances at the property lines for residential property. So there's some sort, opportunities to do different things. They can either amend the site plan. But one of the things that I think the church school is, is looking at is actually dissolving this property line since the rectory is really part of the campus. And that would kind of take away that setback in lighting issue as being, you know, something that would affect the ability to approve this, this particular site plan. So that was, that's one of the things that would be a subject to of the planning commission's approval is the dissolving of that, of that property line if they don't want to make other adjustments to the plan to address those issues. In terms of the building's architecture, they're basically gonna match what's there now, which is mostly a brick building, same colors, materials. You can see here's some photographs of the existing area. And they're, again, they're just gonna try to match what's out there. The traffic generation, there was a comment at the staff developer meeting, concerns about additional traffic with this expansion. This particular expansion would add about twenty students and maybe ten families. So not a significant addition in terms of adding more, you know, traffic to what's there currently. But that is something that, that came up. And, yeah, I'd asked the architect to, to give me an idea of kind of what we're looking at as far as how many more students would this provide for and what that might mean in terms of additional traffic. So, so that's kind of an overview of this project. There were a few subject twos. The staff is recommending approval of the site plan. Subject to those, subject twos that were included in the packet, there were eleven of those. And most of them are really just administrative items that are typical subject twos, including that dissolving that property line between the school and the rectory. So if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Do we have anybody signed up? First of all, we're gonna need a motion, I'm sorry.
We have too many people on. There we go. So I'll move to approve with the subject twos.
Second motion?
No, sir.
Questions by the commissioners?
I just have a question for, for the commissioner or the body. So I think the answer is you're fine. But I approved for the State Fire Marshal's Office some longer-than-normal hose lays for this parcel. Does that mean I need to abstain from this vote? No, I'm just making sure. All right, fair enough.
Any other comments, questions?
Is that correct analysis of that, David? I do have a question because I think this is an opportunity to look at this. I know that in the past, and I don't know where you are on this, Alder, Vice Mayor Meyer, because you're in touch with them. The, this is an opportunity to take a look at the, an ability to maybe have some traffic, require some, some traffic control from them, or even could we look at, and I don't know if this is just thinking outside the box, and I might freak Darrell out by saying this. That rectory has a driveway that comes from the back of the church. Is there a way to make that an exit that comes off that property and straight to Grigsby Chapel? Which is what the, the, my understanding of our ordinance, schools are supposed to have their own access point, not through the neighborhood. Is it possible to make that, carry that rectory driveway through to give it direct access to Grigsby Chapel, and then that be their exit? It's the exit in the morning that's the, and really, in the morning is the, the holdback because it just makes it miserable for everybody in that neighborhood to get out of that neighborhood. I'm just curious if that's even something that we can explore or speak to them about. Especially with the fact that they have to, this is gonna become one huge parcel to begin with. There's a driveway right across the street, right across the way, so it would be something that you could put together so, for safety perspective. I'm just asking.
You're assuming that they, sorry. You're assuming that they're going to dissolve the property line to make it all one?
That's a subject to in this approval.
We've not heard from them to know if that's something that they are considering to doing or if not. I mean, it's, that's relative to whether they dissolve that line or not.
We have a representative here. You want to step up and see if you can help us out here?
I'm Bill Vincent with Community Tectonics. And we have talked to the church about dissolving that line. We have been in touch with Richard Lemay, the original surveyor of the property. And so he is looking into what it would take to dissolve that. I think he's, maybe even waits for some information from Farragut on whether it can be an exempt plat or not. I'm not sure exactly what that means, but he, they're looking into the process of getting that line dissolved. Yeah, there's representatives from the church here, too.
We need to know that before we vote.
Yeah, we.
Well, it's a, it's a, a note, it's a, it's a subject to in our, it's a, it's a requirement.
It's, yeah, a subject, number three subject, too.
Yes, so the church is.
We're, we're assuming that will happen, yes.
Okay, and they're wanting to do that. Okay, that's important, okay. Go ahead, please, I'm sorry.
Well, that's all I, that's, I threw that question out. Is this an opportunity to look at, bring in some relief to that neighborhood? The neighborhood, Preswood Place and, oh, what's the Battery at, at Berkeley Park? This is an opportunity for, to separate that traffic, at least the exit traffic.
Particularly if they're turning to the west.
Yeah. I, I'm just curious, I, nobody's. Am I, Darrell, could you, I, I don't even, I mean, I know I'm asking off the cuff. This is, I probably should have asked you beforehand. I don't even know, are you interested in pursuing that or?
Well, my question is pulling out there, you, you couldn't turn left because it's that short turn just before that. So it'd have to be a right, right out only, right?
Well, I don't know. It's, it's, is that what you would require? That if, if they were pulling out, it would have to be a right out only?
Right. I think there's some concern, too. I mean, that, that's the driveway, I believe that leads right to the, their garages.
That's, I, I understand that, but it's their rectory, they, they could.
About from that circle driveway across on the west side of that rectory.
What are you talking, I'm sorry.
Right there.
Oh, on the other side. And that's, puts it in the bend, further in the bend, which gives you better sight distance.
Might also be some topography problems.
Issues.
I want to say it's a few feet higher than, than Grigsby Chapel there.
Do you think it'd be an issue?
Might be hard to tie down and would be an issue.
I think that's an excellent point.
It should be looked, it should be looked into, for sure, but.
Well, how do we make that a subject to then? I, I don't know that we can require it if it's not engineering, if it's not possible from an engineering standpoint. But I, I, I do want some serious consideration for this, this idea. Do we push it off a month so that we can explore this? What, what are our options here?
Do we need to hear from Lemay as well?
I think that would help, so.
I might just say, as far as coming off the cul-de-sac of the road, that cul-de-sac's got a retaining wall around it that's about sixty-eight feet tall. So there's some significant, we don't have the topo all the way to Grigsby, but there's some substantial grade difference between the cul-de-sac drive and the, and the house, which is up on the hill. So it could, it could be a real, it would be very difficult, I would think, to put a road in there.
Just on that one side?
Well, it's, it's a, it's a little less steep on the, where the existing drive is. You can see those are two, two-foot contours, so it's, and we don't have the contours past. passed because we weren't anticipating needing them, uh, but obviously, it would not be ideal to run a public drive in front of residents, and it doesn't seem like it would be a terribly good idea to run it out on Grigsby and turn right on the main road there either, as close as it is to the other intersection. That's just my opinion, but-
If we asked you to consider this and you looked into it, is that gonna delay your project to the point where it's an issue?
Well, we, we are, almost have a signed contract now, so we're, we're hope, the intent was to hope to start construction at the end of the month, assuming we can get approval on landscaping and building. We already say a fire marshal approval. I think we've met the requirements of the planning commission, the, their items, with the exception of, we've gotta get the, uh, uh, eleven thousand dollar, uh, fee, fee to cover, you know, the bond, but which is already in the works also. Uh, so I think, hopefully, we're planning on getting approval here. We've already responded to comments on the landscaping. We already have fire marshal approval on the building, so our intent was just to start, uh, at the first of the month, and the contractor's contract allows for increases in tariffs in things past thirty days. So, we, we could be seeing, I mean, who knows on the tariffs, but we could be seeing some substantial cost increase if it gets delayed.
Yeah.
Plus, they're wanting to have some renovation in the school by, done by fall, fall. They're not doing much in the existing building, but they've got one classroom they really want to try to get done this summer. So, if the contract gets stalled off on that, that'll, that'll kill that. I might add, too, that the intent of the addition is not so much to increase pupil population, it's to get the kids out of closets and storage rooms where they're having STEM and some science things, and the, the learning class is more like a special ed class with one-on-one instruction. So, they're really just accommodating, they're, these classrooms are to, to facilitate the curriculum they already have. It's, the intent is not to expand pupil, pupil population. And on those counts that were anticipated, we're only increasing four percent e- extra cars from what's there now. It's two-hundred-and-fifty, it's anticipated to go two-hundred-and-sixty. That's four percent increase, so we're not changing traffic much by this addition.
Well, I think the idea, what we've heard from citizens, and they're concerned about the traffic getting out on the Grigsby Chapel, this might be a solution. My question to you is, do we delay this a month or so, or is this something that could be done later on a separate project?
Well, I would hope we could do it as a later project because we, we will have to get a survey of the rest of the property. That could take two or three months, probably. Plus, then we'd have to look at doing the plans to see if that would be possible, and of course, there's no, they have the funds available for the school, but there's no funds available for putting new roadway in, and those sort of things.
You're wanting to survey for the, uh, uh, if you dissolve the line anyway, aren't you?
No, no. Uh, we just dissolve the line and not change anything. If we have to get a road over to Grigsby, we'd have to survey that whole property over to the, to the road, of course, to be able to figure out whether we can make it work or not.
Yeah, they'll have to do a survey of, to dissolve the property line. That'll be a re-subdivision plat, but that should be something that staff can approve, but, yeah, I've talked to-
At your level, not have to come back to us.
Right, it shouldn't, shouldn't have to come to you all. And the building and fire code plans are under review from the town's perspective. The fire mar, state fire marshals looked at them, but we have not approved them yet, so, just a clarification, because that's what that first comment's about. And then, and then, of course, the site plan set will have to be updated to reflect the comments that are in these subject twos, which are pretty minor. Um, so, there's still a few things outstanding, but, uh, but yeah, that's, that's kind of where it stands.
Louise, you okay with that?
I, uh, I'm just trying to think of a way to solve this problem for that. This is an ongoing issue that is not going away. Uh, I know that they've come and asked us to fund it. We're not going to. It's not our responsibility to fund, uh, traffic, um, and it doesn't meet the warrants for a, um, traffic light. We've, we've looked through that, uh, yes, it, it, in that particular time, but you don't put a traffic light in somebody's front yard because you need a traffic light for half an hour. Um, and that was the, the struggle that we had with it when we were looking at the Grigsby Chapel, um, study that we did, because we did quite an extensive study on this. Um, I, I know our goal really is, uh, I wish that we had done, that this school had its own separate access. Um, that's really ideally what probably should have happened during the design of it, um, but obviously, that didn't happen. I understand, that's a, Grigsby Chapel's a tough road in that area. The, the sight distance is, um, iffy, so you're not really solving the problem of people trying to make a left out of here, because that's the problem, is people want to make a left out of there in the sight distance. From what I'm hearing from Darrell, is not, no bueno there, uh, for a left-hand turn. So, it's not really giving us what we want anyway, because it's just, it would be a right out only, and that's not the, what's jamming everybody up. It's, everybody make, everybody's making a left, left out, so, um, I don't know that this is a solution. It was a nice thought exercise, but I don't know that it's a solution.
Well, I'm gonna recommend that the church consider this option and look into it further, maybe down the road. If you think it's something that might work out for y'all, bring it back to us, okay? So, any other questions or-
Yeah, I, I have a question. Do we have somebody from the church here that can come up to the mic and answer a question or two?
Sure.
State your name and address.
Bill Derbyshire. Uh, I'll give the church, 633 St. John Court. The previous discussion really has been about traffic, okay, and obviously, there's more ways to solve traffic than build roads, and we're not really looking at a huge problem here, as far as I can see. I mean, it's not, not many vehicles, although it may make things difficult in the morning. Um, have the local residents approached you with regard to traffic control of some sort during times of, uh, in the morning when school starts or school ends, and if so, or if not, is that a possibility to, as a remedy to this issue?
Just to give a little background, I used to be the principal of the school. Now, I've moved over to the parish and school both, and I'm director of operations and finance. So, I don't know how familiar you are with the backstory that happened. We used to share Ann Page, who did the elementary school and the middle school, and in between those two, she would come down and do St. John Newman for fifteen minutes. That was it. In September of twenty nineteen, the county sheriff said she can no longer do that because that was considered supplemental employment or something, and she was not authorized to do that. So, I had to send out the email that said this is going away, and we caught a lot of, I caught a lot of stuff. Um, ever since then, every once in a while, I would get something from the HOA or a person, and generally, it was the same person or group of people every time. Um, it's fifteen minutes. We used to pay Ann Page twenty dollars a day. If we want to put it and look into putting a county sheriff there, it's ten times that now. It's fifty dollars an hour, minimum of four, plus a car. So, you're talking two-hundred and some odd dollars a day, and there may be a perception out there that the school has a lot of money because we're doing this big, not big, but decent-sized expansion. Well, this was gifted to us, and the school runs pretty much break even. There's, there's no extra cash. So, if I'm, if the principal and the pastor decide to take away fifty thousand dollars, give or take, to pay for traffic, that's taking away fifty thousand dollars that go, can go to those children's education. Um, so, it, it's a balancing point. Do we get some pushback? Yes. Get some from our parents also. Um, when I went back and reread the traffic study, I want to say it was twenty-one. Si- six accidents over that five-year period. I would say from the time of that to now, I can think of two, and I would, I'd be curious as to how many of them are based on the sight distance. Yeah, the traffic backed up, but that, looking, what is it, east, I guess, down Grigsby Chapel, up the hill, you can't see very well, and I would say most of that was traffic accidents are from that. So, I guess I answered your question in a long, roundabout way.
Oh, I think we talked about this briefly at the staff developer meeting, and I think, uh, Mayor, you mentioned the possibility of having persons trained to do that rather than having a sheriff representative.
Yes, uh, I think if you check into it, you can have people trained, such as volunteers. You may have five, ten people trained, and they could work fifteen minutes in the morning, maybe fifteen in the afternoon, or, or whatever it takes, but, uh, from my understanding, it does not have to be a police officer.
Okay, so that, I'm thinking that through. That would probably have to be done through Knox County Sheriff to get an approved person or volunteer out there, would be my guess.
Do you guys have off-duty security, do you have a security there?
We do.
Is that a, a possibility to use that?
That has been discussed, and if you look at when our security officers are there, drop-off is a vulnerable time for those children.
So, you want them on campus, not-
We would rather have the security at the school doors with their car there as opposed to down on the road.
Managing traffic.
Managing traffic. That, that has been a discussion, and in reality, in this day and age, principal, pastor would much rather have that security office at those front doors, and then mass goes at eight oh five, so they're walking at eight o'clock, so they could still theoretically be down on the road, our security, instead of watching them go to mass.
I would suggest that we keep that issue separate from the agenda item.
Understood. It, I, I, now that, now that I know that this is not, we can't, we can't do this from a, from a perspective of a site plan, so I agree.
Any further questions, comments? All right, we have a motion and a second, so it's time to vote. Uh, this is with eleven subject twos. Uh, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? No? No, no. Passes unanimously. All right, we've got one more item, I believe, and that is utilities. Anything?
No, there were none.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Motion to adjourn.
There we go.